Order, could I have a roll call?
John Eichman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
If everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a single missing board member tonight and with two alternates, we need to do a random selection for someone to sit for Jason until he returns to service on the board. So Jeannie, are you ready? I'm gonna go with Left tonight.
Left.
Left. Chris, alright, so Chris, if you would come on up.
Beautiful, good job.
And you'll sit for Jason until, until he returns.
And I get to sit here.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is, we have a couple of upcoming meeting dates, one on September 17th and one on October 15th, and again, if necessary, we can always have an interim meeting if the need arises. So the first item on our agenda tonight is a bond reduction for Hopewell Glen Phase III. This is a reduction from $663,400 to $173,600. That's a total of a $509,800 reduction. Scott, I know you reviewed this, do you have, do you have any questions or concerns as far as that goes?
No, this is the only thing I pointed out, even though it says Phase III, it's actually the final phase because they adjusted the phases a little bit, so this is the final phase of construction. It's that upper section, up towards 376. So we went through, you know, line by line, we made a few adjustments, added some money back in, and we're satisfied with that amount.
Okay, any questions or comments for board, from board members? Do I have a motion to reduce the bond for Hopewell Glen Final Phase or Phase III, whatever the proper...
Phase III, but it's actually the final phase.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
And that will go to the town board on Thursday.
The next item we have on our agenda is a public hearing for special permit for 2A at 122 Lomala Lane in Hopewell. And Jeannie, do we have everything we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have your plan that we can put up on the, do you need the digital?
I have, I do have one CD, I don't know if it's one of, from one of the older ones, but I have a couple of copies of what the plan looked like, hard.
Okay, because it's a public hearing, we just need to be able to display it for the public, so...
Yeah, I can see what I have on that CD.
Okay.
I can see, I know why. I think...
Okay.
It was included.
With that itemized thing? Because I remember doing it, I think.
I mean, it was for the last meeting, I know that, I don't think I've had this before.
I think everything rides right here. This is a public hearing and there's nobody here?
Part of our public hearing process is to make sure that all of the neighbors within a 500-foot radius of the property are noticed, so that's part of what, I'm gonna ask Jeannie if we're ready to open the public hearings, make sure we have the service noticed. Yeah, the one that's there was the one for the zoning board, but I had given the most updated one for the last meeting, so, I don't know if you want me to present it while she gets it, or you wanna wait?
You can, you can start to speak to it, Michelle, maybe if we can just enlarge the plan a little bit on the screen while we do that. And do we have a, yes, we do have our sign-in sheet.
Like I said, I have the most updated one here, if you need a couple of copies.
Okay.
Want me to hand that out, or it's gotta be on the board?
Maybe, I know we don't have any members of the public here right now, but if we, can I, can I trouble, could we borrow your board to set on our display here, if we could use the back of the board, you could set your plan just on that board, and then maybe one of our members...
Yeah, just use the back, yeah.
Thank you very much, I...
I'm sorry.
If, yeah, if you just set it. And then they should be able to zoom in on the plan itself, once you put it there. That's fine, if you, yeah.
Thanks.
And since this is our public hearing, we'll have you guys, you can introduce yourself, and then just give us the quick overview of what you're asking for, and then we'll, we'll move into the questions.
Got it. Okay, I'm Erin McConnell, I'm with Empire Solar, and we are proposing a 9.1 kilowatt ground-mounted solar system at 122 Lomala Lane. This would be 20 panels, seven rows of four panels, being, it's 530 square feet on about two acres. Initially, we wanted, we were asking for a variance for the one side, which is what you see on the board, at 45 feet on the one side, we have adjusted that now to 100 feet, so now abides by all the setbacks that you guys require. The customer opted for a ground mount because he didn't have enough adequate root space, I know it's been a while since you guys were at the property, but...
No, that's fine.
We did propose some screening, so it'd be five trees on each property line side, they're green giants, they're fast-growing, they're three feet per year, and they can grow as, you know, 12 to 20 feet wide at their highest, 50 to 60 feet tall, so, once those things start going, they'll be able to screen from, you know, both property.
Okay.
And I think that's...
And those are, those are at the property line, not next to the panels themselves?
Exactly, so, if anything, this is why we wanted to shift it, because the homeowner might see it, but, yeah, it's right on the sides, and basically the ground mount's kind of in the middle of the property now.
Okay. Alright, great. Any other changes, I know you've changed, other than the location and the screening, any other changes since the last time we looked at this? Okay, and the panel size, it's four by seven, but the size of the panels is all still the same?
Yeah, everything's the same.
And the height is still...
Height's the same, and of course, I think...
14, I think.
14 is the height, okay.
No, 12, I think we, 12 is usually what we put as a max height.
The max height was 12, I believe. And so you, I know you had initially gone to the zoning board, you don't have any zoning variances right now for this request?
No, that's why we...
All the terms of the special permit?
Yes, exactly, so we did try to go to the zoning board to just get it shifted, and basically, we didn't even go to public hearing, because they were like, you know, this is one of the first, I don't know if, not the first ground mount under the new laws.
It's the first, yes.
Yeah, so they just, you know, this was really bought based off of visual, you know, aesthetics reasons, and they were just not willing to budge, right, it wasn't a hardship, it wouldn't block the solar panels, so, we went back to the homeowner, you know, asked him if he was okay with the location being where it is, and if he'd want to plant screening of his own eventually, and he was okay with it, so...
And you're not showing it on the plan, but is the homeowner intending to put screening between his house and the panels themselves, or...
I mean, he didn't 100% verify that, is that something that you guys...
As long as it's not planned right now, that's fine.
No.
I just wondered if it should have been put on the plan?
No, no, he didn't, he didn't.
And the plans we have here right now, they're dated June 19th, is that the, that's the correct most recent revised date?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Michelle, I know you reviewed this, it is our first foray into our new special permit, any questions or concerns that you noticed for this?
No, the only, the only comment, I was not at the site visit, so the applicant is proposing, I believe it's five green giant arbivide on both sides, and it looks to be in the location that would screen it from both neighbors, but that's the only thing I would, I would ask you guys to consider, is to make sure that you're okay with the landscaping that's proposed.
I recall there was significant screening up by the houses, but all of kind of the backyards kind of went down into sort of a plateau with, with visibility kind of across the backyard, so I think where these, I think it's the second page here of the plans, where they're, where they're located, just seems to kind of continue that natural screening, it seems to make sense, I guess you mentioned they could, you're gonna plant them eight feet apart, but you mentioned they can grow to 10 or 12 feet?
Yeah, I think if, that's what I looked up online, so they could grow as wide as 12 feet, but I think this is the lifespan, this would be a long time, yeah.
Okay.
So I recall, all the neighbors are actually using their backyard, so there's different things back there.
Yeah, so...
It's not like it's pristine.
Yeah, the one neighbor, like if, okay, so if we're walking down from his property, and this is the ground mount, the one neighbor on the left, yeah, he had the soccer field facing his neighbors, that's the one, there was a tree down, so like the aerial seems like there's more trees than there actually is, because there was one tree that was already cut, if you recall, so that's why we're putting the five there, and on the other side, it's, I don't know what he's, what that neighbor's doing with their backyard, but it's more open, so, I don't know, okay, but there, it does seem to have kind of like that, it's definitely well shaded from the public street, anyway.
This is kind of a side point, but is there like a battery pack coming with this thing too? I mean, is this gonna allow this house to go...
Not with this project, but you, you could do that.
So, okay, but initially, this is not gonna take the house off the grid?
No, no, and actually, with batteries, you, you can't just go off the grid, you're still connected, it's just when the grid goes down, it's like, kind of like the replacement of a generator. We have, I actually have the approval from, like the preconditional from Central Hudson, in case you need to see that.
Because that's who they would sell back to if there's any access, right? Any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
Scott or Tom, anything before we offer a resolution?
The only question I had, and you may have already covered this, whether or not they're generating power above and beyond what that home needs, or is it just for the home?
It's just for the home. I think there's somewhere on here that says sole consumption, but if you want us, our plans to just specify that, we can.
Yeah, I think Scott, there, when it's residential, I thought state, doesn't the state restrict you to no more than 110?
I only asked...
Exactly.
And there's an assumption that the panels themselves may...
I only asked the question because there were seven rows of four panels, so it just seemed like a mini farm, that's why I asked the question.
It looks like one, but it's only for him, he just doesn't have the roof on...
Maybe just add that to the...
Yeah, again.
Do you wanna put that as a condition? We could add that just to...
Let me just double check, it's nowhere on here.
I mean, but that's part of it being a Tier 2, so...
Say it again?
It, that's part of being a Tier 2, and it, the resolution specifically states it meets all the conditions for Tier 2.
And I think, I believe that one of the conditions in the Tier 2 is that it will not generate more than...
That's right.
...than's required, so, and I, and the resolution states, which you haven't seen yet, but the resolution states that it will meet all the conditions of the...
That's what I was trying to say, but...
Yeah, we don't get over 110% anyway, we don't get the, you know, nicer to credits back, so we don't wanna go over that, anyway.
There's no other questions from board members, do we have anyone in the audience who would like to offer comment on this project, 2A?
I think the guy in the check shirt is a John Jay student, right?
A student? No, okay. If there's, if there's no questions or comment from the public, I think we can go ahead and close this public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we do have a resolution for this evening, does somebody wanna offer that?
Sure. Resolution for solar facility special permit and site plan approval, the name of the project is Toa Solar Permit, name of the applicant is Toa, location 122 Lomala Lane, grid number 635601445704. Resolution offered by planning board member Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for a special permit for a Tier 2 solar facility, and whereas the proposed project meets the conditions of Section 111, Community Solar Energy Systems, and whereas, as shown on the project site plan prepared by Empire Solar and dated January 16th, 2018, last revised through June 19th, 2019, the applicant has provided evergreen landscaping screening to buffer views of the solar panels from the neighboring properties, now therefore be it, and there's, that's it, right? There's no more conditions?
Nope, we verified June 19th was the last revision date, so I think we're good.
No more conditions, so, okay, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby issues a special permit and a site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Site Plan for Toa Solar Facility, prepared by Empire Solar, dated January 16th, 2018, last revised June 19th, 2019.
Hold on one sec, so do we need to add any conditions, Michelle? If we're comfortable that the, what we talked about was already embedded in the terms of the special permit?
So I don't have to write the sole consumption, are we good? Or do you want me to? I'm fine with either.
It's fine, because it's in the condition of the special permit.
Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by John, and votes as follows, Mike?
Aye.
John C.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John E.
Aye.
And Chris?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
Alright, thank you so much.
Just like, just like they add one thing, just so there's no misunderstanding, you still have to come to the building department to get it.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
I know that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a sketch plan review for William Tell Hardware. And thank you again for letting us borrow your board, we appreciate it.
Only you'd know, and you could have had like William Tell written across, you know...
I could have. He's an advertiser.
Thank you.
It's just a typo, it's a typo. Doesn't make a difference. It's a, it is correct, that's all that matters, she's got the purple pen on it.
I'm Siro Interanti Architect.
Carrie Tell.
What I'll do is go over, I, I believe you have copies that were sent down prior, but I did make some, a couple of minor changes on the site plan, I'll go over that with you now.
Okay. We're just gonna have, okay.
Yeah.
With comments from the fire review board, it's on?
Yep.
Okay. They had a comment about providing an opening in the racks here to provide access for firemen, I guess. We're also showing the detail for a fence, the racks are 12 feet high in the back, and we'll provide a 12-foot-high fence, because we're limited for space, so we're going vertical, like you'd see at like at Home Depot or, or Lowe's. So we provided the, the four-foot opening, we also, they asked for bollards to protect the propane tank and the kerosene tanks, so we're showing bollards at five feet on center around where the tanks are stored. There's also gonna be a generator, emergency generator, so if there's ever a hurricane or power outage, the hardware store will be open for people to come and purchase whatever they need in case of emergency. So we put bollards around the generator also. They asked to keep the...
That's on the opposite side, I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
It's right here.
That's on the opposite side from the, okay.
It's in the back of the building.
Yeah, it's on the opposite side.
They also asked for, look, show the location of the dumpsters, which we're showing, two dumpsters here, one for cardboard, one for refuse, they wanted them to be 35 feet away from the building, but we cannot get 35 feet, we can get 20, about 25 feet, our property line is here, so, we cannot meet their request for the 35-foot separation for the dumpsters. They also asked us to take this fire hydrant and locate it closer to the, to Route 82, but that's not on our property, so we won't be able to move that hydrant.
Is it in the right-of-way?
Pardon?
Is it in the right-of-way?
No, it's someone else's property.
Okay.
It's private property. We also showed, there was a question at the last planning board meeting about parking, so we're showing our sidewalk extending to the neighbor's property, and we're gonna be talking to them about possibly using some of their parking, so people could come, you know, from their parking lot into the store.
Are you talking about connecting the two parking lots?
No, just with this, just extending our sidewalk to the property line, there's no fence here or anything.
Right.
So someone could park here and just get on the sidewalk and come into the store.
Okay.
Because we took up one space for the two dumpsters, we've reduced the total parking by one, one space. Now, we've also made an application to the zoning board, because we're under some of the requirements for the size of the parking stall and the circulation lane, distance or closeness of the building to the property line, our intention is to build on the footprint of the previous building, so we've made applications for planning board for what we think we need for variances.
Okay, and we, have we provided a referral to the zoning board yet, or is that something...
I think, I believe we did that at the last meeting.
Okay.
Is there, they've got an application currently in front of the zoning board?
Was that answered, I didn't hear that?
I believe we referred you at the last meeting, and then you have an, an application in front of the zoning board right now.
We've made the application, but we, we haven't received any correspondence enumerating what variances we need, so we pretty much, I did research on the zoning orders and came up what I thought we would need, so at the meeting, we may, we may have to modify our application and ask for more variances, if they, if they think we need them.
Okay. Michelle, with regard to the refuse containers not meeting the setback, I don't believe you can do a variance for that, that's a fire code, right, so they need, you would need to have an enclosure for those, do you have that shown?
No, he said, the letter said enclosure, I'm not really clear what they're talking about, like a fence enclosure?
There's definitely a building code requirement for, and I don't know precisely what it is, but there's a building code requirement when your refuse container is a certain distance from the building, or there has to be a certain material that's used and enclosed, and, and I can get that for you tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Okay, okay.
I had a couple of questions, if I could, the, the racks in the back, are those for things where people have actually purchased the thing, and so they go back and they get it, or will people be strolling through there? I mean, is that really like a shopping area?
Off limits for the customers, Carrie can answer.
Yeah, the intention is that that area is gonna be for employee use only, where the pallet racking is located.
Okay.
Yeah, there won't be any customers walking around.
And the second thing is, are there gonna be any windows on the eastern side of the building?
On the side closest to the...
Yeah, I mean, the other building was kind of like...
No, I think I showed on my elevations, did you?
We showed it on the opposite side.
Okay.
We have one, two, three, four, five, they're not real windows, they're, you know, gonna be a mock window with...
Did you receive this drawing? The elevation, exterior elevations?
It's not ringing a bell, but...
I don't think so, I don't think so.
But, I, I beg, please beg our pardon, but either way, okay, so they...
I think those were on a USB, but...
Because again, the other building, I mean, again, I always loved your store, but the other building was kind of like a warehouse, right?
Right, we don't intend to make this building look that way.
Traffic by all sides of your building now, so it's...
If you look at that, you'll see we have, they're not real windows, but they're shuttered, you know, false windows down the side of the building, so, it's to not look like a flat-sided surface.
We showed some stone veneer along that side also, and the mock windows with shutters covering them.
Once you're, once you're in actual application, you'll of course go to the architectural review board to have their, your elevations reviewed.
Couldn't, I didn't hear that, what'd you say?
You'll, as part of your, as part of your process here with the planning board, you'll also go to the architectural review board to have the building elevations reviewed, the materials, the siding, et cetera.
I think we sent them in, I think there are drawings there?
But currently, right now, you're a sketch plan, so you're at, you're at a conceptual plan, and once it's a formal application, we'll refer it to the ARB.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I, I know we've had a couple of discussions with this plan, and the way you're currently showing the outdoor storage, I think, Michelle, as we are looking at the current zoning, we're not sure that that's actually a permissible use or an accessory use to, to the business in this zone, have we gone any further with that, or are we still concerned with that, is there something we can do here?
There's a couple of things with the pallet racking, one is that we typically don't allow outdoor storage in a, in a business zone, and then also, the other thing about the pallet racking is that, I believe some of the pallet racks are gonna be within the setbacks, so that may be another variance that would be required. So those are the, that's the two comments that I have on the, on the outdoor storage area.
We may be able to, to pull those pallet racks in without a problem, and be off the setback.
Because in addition, I was like, yeah, they also fall within our easements, water and sewer easements, which we typically don't allow anything permanent in those easements.
And, yeah, I was gonna, I was also gonna say that if we decide that the outdoor storage is allowed, then I think the location of the pallet racks, we have to make sure they're not, they're not sitting over any of those easements.
Sure.
Are you, do you have those located on your plan, are you familiar with where those are?
I didn't hear that.
Do you have the easements located on your plan, are you familiar with where they are, just so that, because if you have to reconfigure, I wanna make sure you, you know where those water and sewer easements sit.
It's off the property on the backside and...
No, it actually crosses the property, I can show you here if you wanna have this sketch out.
Yeah, it does, it crosses the property through, through the property.
And then the water line runs up right along through the property. You have two easements, one's a water and one's a sewer.
So, the intention is to use the pallet racking also to, to make it a neater space, right? It's difficult when you're, when you have pallets on top of each other, you're trying to work around things, so with the pallet racking, you have the space in the center to move around, you have the pallet racking on the outside, and then on the outside of the pallet racking, we show a fence that would, you know, we would put whatever type of privacy slats, whatever color, you know.
Okay, and that racking, just, again, I can, I can picture what I, what I see at like Home Depot or Lowe's or somewhere like that, I don't know if it's the same, but they're, they're usually accessible from both sides, right? And they're, they're fairly wide?
They can be accessible from both sides, or they can have a backer on one side, so it's, you know, can go either way, however you have them ordered.
Okay, so how, what are, what are we proposing here?
So the intention for us is to most likely have a backer there, because we don't intend for anybody to be on the outside of it, you know, accessing it, so we'd have a backer there, the pallets would be put on it, behind the backer would be the fence, so, it would be pretty well hidden.
Okay, okay, and the, the depth of the pallet is four feet, or it looked like it was eight feet on the plan, but I couldn't tell if it was to scale or not?
Pallets are approximately 46 by 48 inches, each one, so the, the intention was to have the double depth.
So would there be...
How would you get to the ones on the top, I'm sorry?
No, I was about to ask, I could, there would be a forklift operating there, full-time.
How, how tall are they?
So we're, we're asking for 12 feet. Right, the ones you see at Lowe's and Home Depot are probably, you know, two times, two and a half times that.
Yeah.
We're looking for something on a smaller scale, but similar, yes.
And the height of your, the height of your building?
It's 20 feet. It's on that...
Well, let me just ask, do you have a forklift that goes that deep?
We have a forklift that, with extension.
With extension.
Yeah, we have extensions that we, that we use on the forklift.
To the mid-feet? Okay, so what over is this, from the front of the, front of the building, you're not gonna see the pallet rack behind it? But the ones that run along the side, anybody's...
And the pallet rack actually would need that, because, I mean, again, you do tend to have small spread.
One of the, we wondered is whether the pallet racks, instead of the longer runs, because again, to Scott's point, we've got a couple of easements running through the back of the property, whether we could, whether you could turn them 90 degrees and kind of do a couple of rows, smaller rows in the back, or something like that, I don't know what the distance between them that you'd need for like the forklift to be able to maneuver and things like that.
So, yeah, you need a decent distance, I mean, I, I could put them...
Where else you gonna put them? Yeah, to maneuver.
So if we line them up, I just give them a...
So, yeah, it's gonna be difficult to make that happen, although, however, I'm not opposed to putting brakes in it where we need to, so we're moving it forward.
We're just, I mean, you're gonna have to reconfigure regardless, because right now they're sitting on the easement, so you're going, and just as part of that, you might wanna consider, you know, if you can run a maybe one row along the building, and then whatever distance you need, and then a double side.
Well, this way I could do it, you know, that's possible, to do it two rows in the same direction facing the back... the back of the property that way.
So, Michelle, just to, um, finish what the process needs to be to consider the outdoor storage, 'cause I know now we're talking kinda about site, site planning, but, um, is this part of what the application to the zoning board needs to be? Is this something that's in the planning board's purview to say it's an accessory use, or what, what is, what is the step here to say whether or not this is gonna be permitted?
Um, I mean, we don't typically allow outdoor storage, so I believe that, and, I mean, I'm gonna also look at Tom here to correct me if I'm wrong, but I would imagine that that would be something you would need to go to the zoning board for, for a variance to allow.
So, if I could just say, and I understand there are things in place for certain reasons, um, those pallets will be accessed every day. We're currently selling merchandise off of them on a daily basis. I understand it's considered storage, but it's moving all day long. It's not, it's not exactly a storage area, you know? Um, it's, it's active selling space, whether the customer's taking it from that shelf or we're taking it from that shelf.
But, I just, you're not putting customers back there, right?
No, no, that's not the intention at all.
Okay, all right. Is there, is there, um, are customers gonna be able to, to drive through the back of the property?
No, that is not the intention.
'Cause you also have frontage, right, on the road, on the road or the proposed road that runs along the back?
There, yeah, the proposed road is a driveway along the back.
And access for delivery. The customers end right here, there's a gate right here, sliding gate.
Can you have the mic for you? It's, we're not picking up your voice.
But I would imagine cars are gonna be backing up in that twenty-three by seven-inch space, right? Cars will back up to get what's ever coming out of those pallets.
They may come, they may come this far to have a propane tank filled or purchase some gasoline or kerosene. There's a gate right here. They wouldn't be going beyond that spot.
Okay. So if they, if a customer was buying something that you needed to pull off the pallet racking, where would you load their car?
They could pull into any spaces right here.
Yeah.
Oh, their car from there.
So you're gonna have loading spaces there or something like that?
Yeah, right here.
We could designate loading spaces, sure. I mean, we never have them before, and, and we worked the space the same for thirty-two years.
Okay.
Same way.
So, I mean, we would designate the spaces if necessary.
I don't mean to be difficult, but-
I'm not saying it's necessary. I'm just trying to figure out how you're configuring them.
You don't see them backing in, in front of like that pen, which, I mean, I think it would be fine if it was like striped for that or something that, you know, that, see what I'm saying is, you, you've got that eighteen foot, and then there's like twenty-five by seven, so that would be like this narrow little area there that people, right here, I'm sorry, right here, the cars would be backing in here to go pick up-
They don't come back past.
They, they wouldn't come past here.
So, okay, so there, there's gonna be some kind of fence or gate or?
No, the fence is here.
Right, okay, but, okay.
You want us to put some striping there?
Uh, no, I was just thinking, I, I think that would almost be, given that what's gonna be on those pallets is usually fairly heavy stuff-
Yeah, but-
-that people would back in there. Would you seem like you're gonna, that would be a natural thing to just plan for, right?
If it's real heavy, unless say somebody's got his back sitting there, pickup truck, the forklift would bring it over and sit it on the back of the truck.
Okay, I, that, okay.
Are you proposing, um, like, those vehicle bollards, the security, the bollards around the LP tank area?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we definitely would have those marked out.
I, I thought I saw-
I'm sorry, I didn't, we would have what marked out?
The, the bollards protecting the, the propane and kerosene tanks.
Yeah.
Where, you said you were loading in the, in the rear, so can you just go walk through how the loading would occur, like if a delivery truck came? 'Cause I saw that the, the overhead doors in the back, right?
Uh, right. The trucks, the trucks pull off eighty-two and they back in. They've, you know, um, we receive the merchandise back behind where the, approximately where that propane tank is or a little further. Uh, we would take it off of the truck before it, place it behind the gate in that area back there, and then load it into the store as necessary, but we unload everything off of the truck first.
Okay, so, so the truck would basically, um, be unloading near, around where the propane tanks are.
The truck is gonna back up to the right, if you're looking at the plan, to the right of that, uh, area. I mean, I'm not opposed to putting the, to moving the fence forward, um, you know, and stopping the truck further up, if, if the concern is that.
There's nothing going on here.
Do you have any kind of reciprocal parking arrangement with your neighbor?
Not yet. We, it is my intention to discuss it.
It seems to me like your truck traffic, because that next site, the way you can just circle back out and come out with the light, everything else would be, offer incredible potential.
You mean opening the back?
Uh, no, having a reciprocal, just having trucks pull in next door.
Oh, just to have an agreement with them.
Yeah, and then having some kind of a access that way, because then they can just pull back out.
That would be up to him.
Yeah. And it, and it wouldn't shut down-
Sure.
-a portion of your parking in the meantime.
Sure.
And it seems like-
Typically, the trucks are there earlier in the, earlier in the morning, earlier in the day when there's not, when there's, when there's not as many people in the store.
When you guys are hopping there at a light period and when there at a heavy period, you guys are light.
Yeah, there is a, um-
Complimentary-
Yes, complimentary timing there is. But I, I, it is our intention to discuss it with him.
Is it usually a box truck, or is it a semi?
It's a big truck, yeah.
It's a box truck?
Semi.
It's a semi.
It's a semi?
Yeah. They're, you know, they're delivering, so, you know, at times twenty pallets.
Okay, so it's a full-size square.
We do have full-size tractor trailers.
So I think the, the circulation you intend for the deliveries, we just need to have that somewhere documented.
Okay.
Maybe move forward.
Sure.
But, I mean, this has always been one of the cornerstone businesses of the village, and it's like, it's great to see it coming back.
Thank you very much. It's, it'll be good to be back. It's, it's been a long time.
It's one of the few stories that people really remember and recognize about Hopewell, so.
Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
The other, the other, I'm just going through the comments. Um, the other comment would just be that also we need to have some sort of plan demonstrating how emergency vehicles will, will access the site, so that has to be shown too.
Um, Michelle, without the, without a, um, parking agreement with the neighboring property, it's, it's not part of the ZBA, right? It's still planning board purview if we're going to grant a parking variance, so that we don't have to put to the ZBA.
Correct, yeah, they would, they would, um, it's technically a special permit for the, for the parking, and they could, there's a number of different things. They could propose share parking, land bank, which they can't do here, 'cause they know the space, but there's, um, a waiver, a direct waiver of the parking spaces, so there's a number of different options they have, and you should look at that, the, um, special permit for, for parking.
Okay.
Okay? And propose what spaces you may need, 'cause you're short, technically short, about thirteen spaces.
Uh, I think once the garbage is in those, that space, yeah, I think we're thirteen sure.
Yeah.
Thirteen required, we have to-
Long-term subject.
So, I'm sorry, what?
I come up with thirteen required based on the, uh, dividing, uh, the, uh, it said in the code, area devoted to retail sales or service activities.
Just need you to speak into the mic. I'm sorry, it's hard for us to, we, we can't actually hear you.
It said in the code, two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of floor area devoted to retail or service activities. We've got about eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three square feet divided by two-fifty, I come up with thirty-three cars. We can provide twenty-six.
'Cause you're, you're, we're making the assumption that, um, about eighteen-hundred square, a little less than eighteen-hundred square feet is storage in the building right now, or?
No, it's based on the plan, the layout plan.
The floor plan?
Yeah. You didn't see the floor plan? You didn't see the elevations?
No, I did see the floor plan, but typically with a retail building, we, we go for the, the full square footage. It's, uh, because it's-
Well, there's, there's area in the back that's stores, there's area in the back that's offices, bathrooms. We de, I deducted those spaces.
Okay, well, I can-
'Cause it said dedicated to retail sales, so I don't think they're dedicated to resales, retail sales, so I netted those out and then divided by the two-fifty.
Did you say thirteen spaces?
No, we have twenty-six spaces.
Yeah, but thirty-three are required by your chart.
Right.
I thought I heard you say thirteen, I'm sorry.
No, thirty-three.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Um, and then that, um, based on that, you'll need two handicap spaces.
Okay. We're showing one, we'll have to put another one in there.
And then the aisle width, which I know that you, you identified that as a potential variance needing, needed. Um, the code shows that we have a, a required aisle width in a parking lot, off-street, um, parking of twenty-four feet, and I believe yours is like eighteen, or how, yeah, about eighteen?
Yeah, and one, uh, one area, it's, um, in the front, it's only, we only, we're gonna get eighteen feet in, and in the back, we've got twenty-three feet, seven inches on the side.
With standard depth parking spaces, or?
With standard depth parking spaces. Now, we could reduce the parking spaces a little bit in depth and gain a little bit more space on the aisle width. Well, we could talk to the zoning board about that.
Well, I think standard is twenty, and they're down to eighteen, so I don't know there's much there.
Oh, so the spaces themselves are only eighteen?
Yeah.
Standard's eighteen?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay. So we need a variance.
Well, we can work with eighteen, but even at eighteen, it still only leaves you seventeen-four for the aisle width.
So, ha- have you considered talking to the neighbor about connecting your two parking lots, 'cause that would actually ease your circulation. You could almost make it one, that aisle way, one way, and have them always-
So I didn't. I don't know how he would feel about breaking the, uh, the curbing in the front. Um, you know, the, uh, the problem for us is we can't break it in the back, right, so it ca, it can't be a drive-through space. Um, so, you know, it being in the front, would the intention, I don't know, how, would you be trying to close off the front, uh, access? If you're opening that up, how's that work with, with his traffic and his parking spaces, is I guess what I'm saying.
We'll have to talk to him about that.
We, we have to discuss it. We have to discuss it.
And his pull-in is right there too, so it'd be like, you'd be trying to pull out, right?
I know, but it's worth it to see if we, you know, if we can connect those.
Oh, I agree. I agree. Some kind of improved circu, I mean, ideally, it'd be great to have it go around the back and out.
Or you'd have parking spaces on the roof.
I know, but that's, that's the idea.
You know, if the space were bigger, if we were able to do it and still keep the merchandise separate, we would definitely do it, but there's just not enough room there for us to make that, that thing happen, you know? Um, so, uh, we will address, uh, the options of the parking.
Okay. Are there other questions you have for us? You're in sketch plan. I think this is your final, this is your final sketch plan, so.
So the outside design that we, um, that we showed, is there any other input that you guys have as far as, um, the outside of the building?
No, that's gonna be through the architectural review board once you make your application. I mean, gen, generally, it looks fairly standard, but I, we would defer to them to, to make that.
I, I have a comment, um, just because I know, and I know we've talked about this comment before, just that potentially, as, as we've discussed, there could be a road going along there, so I would just, um, ask, ask you to consider that, that facade, because that will, may be public right away at some point, looking at that building, so, um-
It's considered in that newest plan that you guys have, so.
You're talking about the left side of the building and right side?
The left side.
Yeah, the left side.
Potential opportunity.
Just, I'm gonna ask, I wonder if, uh, if you've looked into or could look into maybe acquiring parking for just your employees at an adjacent parcel? That might, might help, for just employees only.
Yeah, that would be something we would consider, and, uh, you know, we're up for considering whatever's gonna make it work, so.
Any others? I have a question. Will we be receiving like formal review comments?
So you're in a sketch plan right now, um, I think-
You can have my comments, I can send you.
Yeah, Michelle will provide comments, but our professionals would weigh in once you have a formal application in front of us, our, our engineer and our, uh, traffic engineer.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Michelle, do you have an extra copy of your comments right now, or?
I, I don't, but if you give me your email address. Oh, you have it?
I've got one.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for a proposed gasoline filling station at convenience store.
I can also keep these.
At two, twenty-five fifty Route fifty-two in Hopewell Junction.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Ms. Chairwoman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Lapina with the Chasen Companies. I'm representing Gaslamp Petroleum this evening. Um, they're currently under contract to purchase a one-point-four acre parcel located at twenty-five fifty New York State Route fifty-two. Uh, the parcel is, uh, to the south on fifty-two of Heritage Square, uh, to the east of Par Four Golf Course. It's a former restaurant. It, uh, has a, an existing garage as well as the former, uh, restaurant, uh, on its, uh, property. Gaslamp Petroleum's interested in redeveloping this property, uh, staying within the confines of the, uh, previous disturbed areas on this parcel into a twenty-two-hundred square-foot convenience store with two, uh, pump islands and four fueling locations. Parking would be provided in the front of the convenience store, as well as in the, uh, eastern portion of the property along here as well. Um, as you're aware, this particular property has a floodplain that goes along its eastern portion of the site. Uh, what we did in terms of locating all the facilities, the septic, the convenience store, the fuel, uh, underground tank, and all the pump islands are located outside of the onsite-
It's gonna be my first question.
-floodplain. So we took that into consideration, as well as the, uh, well out front that we located to maintain a two-hundred-foot separation to the septic.
How, how current is the, um, the limits for the floodplain?
Uh, the floodplain shown on this is based on the county, um, mapping that we have.
Okay.
Tonight, uh, our intention is to get some feedback from the board, and, uh, we would go out and do a detailed survey and delineation of the floodplain as it relates to the established FEMA elevation for that particular location.
Okay. And can you just, forgive me, but I'm just trying, I, I, I'm familiar with the site. The existing building, where would it be in, as it relates to the-
Right here.
So it's right, okay. But you're not reusing, you'd raise it, right?
We're raising the existing building, and the intent is to raise the existing garage that's back here as well.
Okay.
Uh, but we're trying to work within the confines of the areas that are all cleared on the site and within the confines. We'd have to redevelop the onsite septic system. We couldn't, uh, we've done some research on it and couldn't.
I missed the last part of what you said.
We have done some research on the existing, uh, septic disposal system for the site, and we haven't been able to found any previous records, so we would have to redevelop the onsite septic for this project.
Okay.
Chris, uh, I apologize, I really have not studied this enough as I should, but it seems like the west side of the property is higher than the eastern side of the property, right? It slants, so will you be-
You're correct.
Pardon?
You are correct.
So, will, there be fail removal for that, right? Because the gas station, you can't have it go in on a slope, right? So-
You, you're correct on that as well. If you're looking for a job, you're a great engineer. Doing design work.
So what's the bank gonna look like where the golf center is then? What is that gonna be like, just a?
So there'll be a slight drop in the elevation change. Uh, we tried to maintain some, uh, landscaping, uh, in this particular area here. This is kinda where the greater drop is, uh, adjacent to where the, uh, proposed building is.
But you don't think there's gonna need to be a retaining wall or anything?
No, there's not going to be a need for a retaining wall. And part of what we did was in terms of leveling it here, one of the things we thought about when we were doing this layout was, well, what if we were to consider putting the parking here and minimize the, uh, parking in the rear and the additional impervious? But then we started thinking about the need for potential retaining wall if we're going to start going further to the east. Henceforth, we came further, uh, to the south with our parking in the rear. And also, it, it, it really, uh, was in sync with the building as the parking is adjacent to the sidewalk in front of it.
So, so it'll be, you're, you're really kind of just moving that grassy bank further to the west, right?
There's a little bit of...
It's not going to be a wall or anything like that?
No, we're looking to use natural grade in terms of, uh, establishing a slope.
And by the way, I do have a resume if you're interested, but no.
That's your kind of experience.
Okay, so it's, so the site will look different from that. And the other thing was the one-point-four acres, it just seems like that site is bigger than that. It's...
Well, you know, the interesting thing is, uh, the portion in the back of it is actually part of the Par Four Golf Course.
Ah, okay.
It, it extends to the back that, and I, I'm not sure how the tax parcel was ever established that way, but it kind of takes a slither out and then juts back into the, uh, golf course itself.
Ah, okay.
So you have, you have two pumps and four filling...
Filling locations, correct.
Locations. If you turned it ninety degrees, is it the same? I just, uh, I'm, so, but there's not many gas stations in town that would only have four filling stations, fill, filling...
Correct, one, we were, in, in this particular case, we're, we're limited by the narrowness of our, uh, front yard here so that we can limit only one truck coming in. So we needed this for maneuverability interior-wise. We were also encumbered by the floodplain as well and trying to minimize the amount of retaining walls. We, we do feel that the pumps in this location and the number of pumps provided here would suffice.
And you're not anticipating any kind of, um, anything other than just a standard convenience store in the back?
Standard convenience store, there...
No drive-through, no, no kitchen, no?
There will be, uh, sandwiches made, there'll be no deep fryer, uh, in, in this facility. They will do breakfast sandwiches, the, uh, bacon, egg and cheese, sausage, egg and cheese in the morning. Have to have a grease trap, uh, exterior grease trap for the health department. And that would then have to be for, uh, sent to our septic disposal system.
Okay.
What kind of signage are you envisioning?
I'm sorry?
Signage.
Signage? Uh, it'd probably be a, uh, a small field stone wall and, uh, shallow sign out there. I don't see the need for a larger sign here, uh, just based on the, uh, view shed here and the site distances. So probably, uh, six or...
A lot of traffic there.
I'm sorry?
You've got a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but I, 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 I think just based on, as you come through, this is pretty clear along here, so there's nothing actually obstructing the view of this. But I think a low-level, uh, sign as opposed to like a ten or twelve-foot sign would suffice.
Okay.
It'd be something similar, uh, if you're familiar with their, uh, facility in Hyde Park, uh, that they redid on Route nine. Across from, um, near the firehouse on Route nine, kind of a sign similar to that low level with the field stone wall and, uh, a small little rooftop over that.
Michelle, have we looked at the parking? And I, I know we haven't probably looked at, uh, we're only in the site circulation yet, but...
We're, um, we did look at the parking and the parking is, uh, is pretty much what's required, not including the, the spaces that are at the pumps. This site does, I mean, potentially, if additional parking was required, they do seem to have some space that you, perhaps you could add spaces if, if needed, but they do have the, currently the required amount on the site, not including the pump spaces. Um, the only, one of the, um, comments I have is that just at, at whatever point you know where it is, the loading zone should be shown on the, on the site.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it showed up very well here. We have, so the intent is for the fuel trucks and any other loading beverages, we have a striped section here and I know it's very difficult to see on the screen here, it's, it's faint, we, it's in gray, it probably should have been in black. But, uh, if you look at our... If you look at what we submitted, you could see that we have a stripe there, uh, here on the west side.
Okay, great. And then, um, you know all this, but is the plan demonstrating emergency vehicle access when?
Yes, we, we, we did receive the fire department's comments. Just to note, we do maintain the thirty-five-foot setback, uh, that they put in their, uh, comment letter to us. We will have to show, uh, the location of the Knox box on our future plan and circulation for the fire truck. I, I don't think fire truck circulation is going to be an issue because we have the ability to circulate a WB fifty tractor trailer in here as well.
And then just my other comments are that you provide landscaping lighting details for the site once you know what they are and then also if you have a proposed sign, the sign location.
Okay.
And Michelle, we, have we looked at the special permit requirements? Is there any concern on this site with the floodplain or anything else that we need?
Um, no, I mean, one of my comments was just to, to refer it to the floodplain administrator so he can look at it and let us know if there's any issues that he comes up with, but, um, other than that, they, the special permit requirements are met.
So are there any variances that are going to be needed?
They, they meet the special permit requirements?
It seemed to me just, this was the, as of right use, classic.
Well, Michelle, I know there was a few businesses that were not allowed to be within like a thousand feet or something with the golf center right there, recreation use, is that a problem? That, that's unacceptable?
That's at the, um, the nursery, not nursery, uh, daycare center right across the street.
Well, it's, 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 um...
Yeah, I didn't know if the recreation was considered public gathering.
We are...
I would have thought more of a park, but, in that case, but, I mean...
It wasn't specifically listed, but...
It's not, it's not specific. I mean, I, I suppose it's up for interpretation, but I...
I didn't know if we had other situations which would clarify that this was okay.
I can look, I'm not sure that we have.
We could take a look and make sure that that's...
I would say that, I would say that...
So you want to look at neighboring site usage?
Yes.
We do meet our setbacks to the fire station.
Yep.
As well, that was listed in there.
And ju- and I'm sorry if you said this already and I, I missed it. Do you have, uh, both, um, left, full left-hand turning in and out of the site?
The intent, we would have left turn in and left turn out, uh, that would be subject to, uh, review of the DOT.
Okay.
Due to the, uh, reduced number of pumps and reduced size of the facility, the actual, uh, traffic counts for this are much, uh, lower than our typical, uh, projects where we have four to six, uh, pump islands in stores that are twenty-eight hundred square feet, so.
So you're not anticipating needing a turning lane or reconfiguring anything?
W- we are not, uh, but, um, that's going to be left to the interpretation of the DOT. Our, our, our first, uh, what we first wanted to do was come to the board and get your feedback before we met with any other agencies. With regards to, I, I know we were just talking about these setbacks, uh, it's, uh, two hundred feet to a school, public library, theater, church, or place of wor- worship, or a public gathering place, playground, or firehouse station is what, uh, the code's written for. So, it's, I believe this particular project meets those, uh, requirements.
I don't see any red flags.
Okay.
I mean, definitely there's a few things we've talked about that you need to work on and...
So we, one of the first next steps.
I'm not seeing anything that would, major issues.
So if, if you would, don't mind, we'd like to go meet with the DOT next, uh, present this plan to them as well.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Hearing you.
I'm sorry, we'd like to go meet with the DOT as well, would be one of our next steps to get some input as to the need for any left turn lanes or left turn out of the site so that we have a more refined plan when we come back to you.
We, we would appreciate it if you could include our traffic engineer in that meeting and...
Absolutely.
If you can't schedule a random, that's fine, but if you can, it just helps the, our professionals to kind of be on top of what the discussion was with, with, uh, DOT. Michelle, maybe we could just mention to Dave that, uh, he should expect a meeting.
Yep.
Uh, was Dave given a copy of these plans or should I forward him a copy?
He, he has them, um, but I will make sure, I'll, I'll send him an email tomorrow and let him know that, um, we've asked you to contact him about a meeting. Do you have us contact him?
Yes, I do. Any other additional questions this evening?
Questions or comments for board members?
Thank you very much for your time. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Summit Woods, a project update and the SFEIS discussion for proposed hundred-and-seventy-five watt cluster subdivision.
Hey, Chris.
This one is located at thirty-one sixty-two Route fifty-two. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, thought we were waiting for... Members of the board, Andy Gilchrist, uh, representing the applicant, um, project attorney. With me is Mark Day, the project engineer, and Dan Garen, principal of, of the applicant. I, I thought I would start very briefly with, uh, that, that we're back in front of, uh, the board on the project. As the board might recall, this project does go back a, a few years. The project has always been proposed as a one-hundred-seventy-five lot subdivision, its cluster subdivision. It came in, in the early part of the two-thousand'sies. It was given a POSDEC, it was scoped, there was a DEIS and that was submitted and accepted as complete in two thousand and four. And the project went to public hearing on both the DEIS and the subdivision itself. After that, the public hearing on the, uh, DEIS was closed and a, and a final EIS was submitted in two thousand and five and the project appeared to be proceeding toward a finding statement. An issue came up, as the board may recall, regarding bog turtle habitat on the site and that, um, if I can use the term, sidetracked the review of the project for a handful of years. The applicant did deal with, um, the Army Corps of Engineers on a required wetlands permit and as part of that review, uh, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service review took some time concerning the bog turtle habitat and other endangered species. The applicant did retain the appropriate consultant, worked through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service review and Army Corps review to the point where Army Corps did issue, um, a wetlands permit for the project. You also may recall that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, has a condition to that. It does require preservation of the wetland area and maintenance of habitat on the site. And we have been working with Army Corps on inappropriate conservation easement. Uh, that will be required for that, both in terms of restrictions of use as well as habitat, uh, maintenance and management. So unfortunately for the project, that took, uh, a considerable amount of time. While that was going on, the, the project initially proposed, as you may recall as well, um, onsite water supply as well as a private wastewater treatment plant. And a lot of that work was reviewed, uh, at the county health department and Mark did a significant amount of engineering work on that. I will defer to Mark, he'll give you a little bit more on the, uh, water, um, and wastewater issues. But during this review, there also became an opportunity to work with the town on, uh, actually connecting the project to public water and public sewer. And when that opportunity arose, uh, Mark did a lot of work with the town on advancing that proposal. And again, a lot of work's been done on that. There is, uh, and I know it's been called in the, in the supplemental FEIS, I'll get back to the seeker procedure in a moment. It's called the preferred alternative, we'll come up with the right name for the alternative. But what's being proposed now for the project is a public water connection and is also a public sewer, uh, connection. And again, I'm going to defer to Mark to, to go through a little bit more in detail. Procedurally, we were at the point then of, because of the project changes, needing to provide to the board a supplemental, uh, FEIS. Obviously, the project had some changes that needed to be described in the supplemental FEIS. We worked with the town on issues that needed to be included in that supplemental FEIS. Uh, we worked on submissions. The submission of what's in front of you now was made in, uh, in February or March and that, that's been reviewed by staff and by your technical consultants. We have received comments back, uh, from, uh, the town planner as well as...
And my comments also included the traffic comments from the traffic engineer.
That's correct, and, and so we have those technical comments. We'll be responding to those comments. Our plan will be to submit to you an amended supplemental FEIS for review. Our goal procedurally, um, will be to have the board accept the supplemental FEIS for the project. That will then advance the seeker review of the project. Obviously, our goal then will be to work with the, well, board on a finding statement and then to move forward on preliminary, um, action on the proposed subdivision. Obviously, if there's a public water and public sewer connection, there'll be the need for public water, public sewer, uh, district creation or extension. That will need to be done. We will need to put together map plans and reports for those proposed districts and submit those to the town for review. We understand that, that of course will be contingent on this board, um, approving a plan that includes the public water and public sewer connections. We would anticipate that in the event the board grants preliminary approval, we'll get to work on the map plans and reports for those district extensions. I would anticipate if the board's inclined to move forward on the preliminary plat, that that certainly would be a condition, uh, to any action on the preliminary plat. We are continuing to work on the specifics of the conservation easement with Army Corps and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. There will be an issue concerning who will hold, who will be the beneficiary of that conservation easement. That's still being worked on. There are some options here, the, a, a land trust or land conservancy could take that. One option would be the town, uh, to take that and perform the necessary annual inspections to make sure that the restrictions are being adhered to and, uh, the habitat is being managed. But we're working through those issues. I would anticipate the board's input on that as well and the town's input. And again, tho- those clearly will need to be addressed and most likely, I would think, in a condition to any action on the preliminary plat.
Can you just elaborate a little bit when you say the maintenance of the habitat? Who would have that responsibility?
Well, whoever holds the conservation easement, the, obviously, in theory, there'll be an economic contribution when the conservation easement is granted. In the event it's a land trust, it's likely that there'll be an upfront economic contribution to a land trust that would fund future ongoing inspections and habitat maintenance. That, that would be on the holder of the conservation easement. There, there is not a homeowners association proposed for this. You'll see the, the layout of the lots do not extend into the common area. We're working through the issue of who would hold legal title to the land that'd be subject to the conservation easement as well as the beneficiary of the easement. Those are things that admittedly we have to work through, the details we have to work out. We have worked on the actual restrictions, the language of the conservation easement itself. But we do need to identify the party that would own title to that, uh, open land as well as the entity that has the...
I'm sorry, who are the candidates for that? I mean, are you, would it be like a homeowners association or are you thinking about...
We're not proposing a homeowners association.
Natural Resources Defense Council or one of those?
Probably if it's going to be privately held by a not-for-profit, uh, land trust. If I can use this phrase, that's in the business of holding the conservation easements and making sure the open space is maintained. I, some municipalities will take title and, and take the conservation easement and, and take on, uh, that role as well. These are some issues that I'd like to further discuss, both with this board and with the town. But in concept, it, it would either be a not-for-profit land trust or a municipal holder of that.
Okay.
And it, and obviously, the terms and conditions of the conservation easement need to be reviewed and approved by both U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Army Corps, but also, uh, reviewed and agreed to by whoever's going to hold that conservation easement. So there's a little bit to do to work through that, but in concept, it's either going to be a private, not-for-profit land trust or a municipal entity.
Thank you.
So in terms of the seeker process, how far along the path do you need to be identifying those things before the seeker process can conclude?
Good question. I, I think in concept, th- these are discussed in the supplemental FEIS. I, I think the terms and conditions, um, are generically discussed in the supplemental FEIS. Obviously, the condition of maintenance of that open space, the habitat management plan that we put together, those should be identified. But it, it's a little bit of a cart before the horse. You, you need to have the, enough information in the EIS record to address the potential adverse impacts. We think a requirement of reasonable restrictions and through a conservation easement and require maintenance of the habitat as set forth in our habitat man... require maintenance of the habitat, as set forth in our habitat management plan, are appropriate findings in the seeker process. And any condition attached to a preliminary approval would be those issues need to be finalized in conjunction with any final plat action. So it's a little bit of, as I say, cart before horse. We have to have enough information to address the potential adverse environmental impacts without committing to a conservation easement, terms and conditions, or an end owner or beneficiary of the easement, because we don't know if we have a preliminary plat approval yet. So we need to know exactly where the open space areas will be. I'm going to add into this, when the project had private wastewater, there was an onsite wastewater treatment plant being proposed on the Summit Woods site, and we worked with DEC on getting the appropriate discharge permit. In the event there is a connection to public sewer, which we're now proposing, that may alter the area that would be subject to restrictions and conservation easements, or it may alter some other things. So if the town is inclined to proceed with a public sewer connection, the area that had been identified for the onsite wastewater treatment plant, we need to look at that. That's been discussed in the supplemental FEIS as well. But these are some things that I think are, as I say, appropriate for discussion in the EIS record and conditions to any preliminary action. Once we know that layout and conditions attached to preliminary approval, we can get those issues addressed and resolved prior to the final plat. Yes?
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is the preferred option really your preferred option? I mean, you almost seem to have it in-
No, no, no. At this point, the applicant's goal is to have the public water and the public sewer connection. It makes sense from the project, and we think it makes sense from a municipal perspective.
Okay.
Yeah. We called it the preferred option in the supplemental FEIS, that's what I meant by that.
Feeling like this is being forced upon you?
Absolutely not. This is something, an opportunity that came up.
Well, you know, just to respond to that is, if you recall, the town board advised this Board, both for this development and one next door, Montage, that the town board be very reluctant to consent to the formation of a transportation corporation for the plant. So this proposal, which the applicant finds acceptable, resolves that issue. So that's an approval that's beyond this Board that rested with the town board.
I'm sorry, I have another question on the conservation easement. So you referenced the open space areas, but you also referenced maintained areas. Do you anticipate additional easements that would be needed for the landowner there that's taking on the conservancy to need easements in your project to access specific areas that need to be maintained? I'm not-
No, I don't think so. I think it's all encompassed within the conservation easement. We've been working on that.
So the conservation easement will abut, like, a public access way, so that they're not, whatever needs to be maintained can be maintained?
It'll actually be collarbarred. That was the entrance for the proposed treatment plant, which has access to that area.
Okay.
But that would just be for maintenance purposes?
Correct.
But that's my point, I mean, if there's something specific that needs to be done for a particular habitat, I want to make sure that we're not going through people's backyards to get to it.
But I don't want anyone in that area to think it's going to be a viable access to the subdivision.
Oh, that's correct. No, no, just for maintenance of those open space areas.
Okay.
As I said, we are, we've received the town's comments and the technical comments. We'll be addressing those in an additional submission of what would then be the revised supplemental FEIS for review by your staff.
And you have comment, the comment letters, both from Michelle and from Pete?
CPL.
That's correct.
CPL, sorry.
Yes, we do have both of those, and we'll be responding to those. I think it's a good idea for the Board to get a little bit more information on the water and sewer part. Before Mark gets up, one of the comments that were raised, and I think it's a good one to discuss, which was, and Tom, this kind of follows up on your point too, which is the proposed public access onto the existing public roadways. This project does have two existing access points. The adjacent Montage project had one, and there was an agreement between the projects where the second access for Montage would be through the road system proposed for Summit Woods. But it doesn't go the other way. There are two existing access points for Summit Woods on its own, and certainly, the Board should hear that the applicant will commit to constructing both of those within Phase One. One to full standard for vehicular access up to a certain point, presumably at that point, then for emergency access, and then in a subsequent phase, that would be improved to a full, you know, town-spec road.
And I think we also discussed the possibility of, for lack of a better term, of phasing, that you, since you do have that dual access, you might construct that area, and then that would not mandate the secondary road until further down the road when you get into development of that side.
Yep. So there is a phasing proposal here. We do think there's adequate access both for vehicular and emergency access. So the Summit Woods project in that regard is a standalone. Montage is dependent on the Summit Road system for their second access point, but Summit Woods is not. It's a standalone, and it does have those two access points.
Do you yourself as having, though, a dependency with Montage if you are going to try to pull the public access to water and sewer? I mean, I would think-
Actually, not. The benefit of Summit Woods is, and this is where I'll, I'm going to segue to Mark on that point, but Summit Woods can be viewed as truly a standalone project, not just for vehicular access, but for water and sewer as well. And that's a good point to have Mark further explain.
Great.
Yeah, to continue on that, we looked at both projects separately. The only crossover would be, and this has yet to be worked out, is how the two would connect. But at this point, I have another slide on there. What we're proposing to do with this project is to actually, we're going to exit out of the more eastern entrance and, is that the only one? To put, to begin construction to the Four Corners project. We're talking about going up Old 216.
Want to go to the utility route?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that would work. Thank you. And this might be tough to see, but at the bottom of that plan, there's, the red line is the proposed route that we are proposing to take. Where you see the beginning of it at the, let's say, the southern tip of this plan, is actually our more eastern entrance. Then we would continue up Old 216, and we'd go, continue up to the Four Corners project. This is for both water and sewer. So at some point, whether Montage comes later, or, you know, let's say for whatever reason they both go at the same time, you know, there's a possibility, don't forget, we always kept a right-of-way open between the two properties in this location where the two could trade access points. I'm not saying it yet, but Montage could come through here and continue up there if everything hits at the same time. If not-
Your utility access, you mean, as well?
Correct. And then if not, then Montage can come out its other entrance, which is on the opposite side of Old Route 216, and they would merge, let's say, where 216 comes together. That's a possibility. Independent or not? We've tried to leave all doors open when it comes to that.
I'm sorry, Mark, this is, because I have not had a chance to really dig into the, is there any part of that infrastructure that, where either Montage or Summit Woods is dependent upon some piece of infrastructure on the other in the preferred option?
No.
Okay.
No, each one because-
Is that like a pumping system, or any of that?
No, really, what this does now is it takes all that out of the equation. Right now, we would be relying on Four Corners for both water and sewer.
And again, this is probably a little off-base, but, you know, we've talked about how each project had to have a clear path to proceed if the other did not come to be. But is there any way that a delay in either one of these projects could screw up the phasing of the other?
No, and that's the beauty about doing it this way. If, let's say Summit Woods was to start tomorrow, then we could actually construct this roadway out of our eastern, or, sorry, our utilities, out of our most eastern entrance, follow this path, that would be independent of Montage.
So these are two completely independent open roads?
The only thing, let me just add, though, the sizing of your force main, then, whoever comes first is going to size that force main for both projects?
For both.
And that's somewhere in the contract, on the development agreement or something like that?
Well, my understanding is to have a developer's agreement, and when whoever goes first funds it and builds it, whatever it is, and then the other one, one comes along and reverses them.
The option may be two separate force mains, where one uses one, one uses the other, depending on-
But they'd have to get installed at the same time.
Right, they'd be in together. Worst case, one comes five years after the other, Montage comes later. Again, Montage would take the western route of 216, and it would merge where the two come together. So, I mean, we've kept that open on both sides. I think we've also left it open that if, for some reason, they were both building at the same time, Montage could use that accessway tie in here and just save the headache of going down the western leg of 216. It's an option. I mean, again, there's a few options that are usable here, so.
But I'm assuming that there's some sort of inter-developer agreement or something that depending who goes first-
Yes.
Kind of know that neither one is going to, maybe to Scott's point, I'll use it, size the force main to not work for both, that sort of thing? Like, you have an agreement that it'll support both?
We would size it, let's say, we would size for both. So either one force main, two force mains, possibly three, depending on phasing.
More than likely, you happen to go two, because you may not get your velocities-
Correct.
On a bigger pipe with just the one project.
Correct.
You could go a small one and a big one, and switch over to the big, we may have options when you get to that level of detail, but I would see, I would think two.
Yeah, at least two. I'm seeing maybe three, depending on how each project's phased.
So Scott, and if this is not a proper discussion here, let me know, but is there any, is there anything that we as the town would want to have happen with regard to, if we're putting this piping in through these developments, are there other areas in this area that would also benefit?
We're going to be looking closely at that, yes.
Yes, Scott's been working on it.
So potentially, the development of water and sewer districts isn't limited to just this project, or just the two projects?
I think we're primarily looking at existing commercial places in that area.
The route between the two may be utilized as what's known as a 209Q area, sewer improvement area, but the districts would only include the two subdivisions, who would then become, for lack of a better term, a tenant of the Four Corners, but they'll all be under the control of the town board once they're built and turned over.
Yep, and we agree with that. I would envision the district creation just for these two projects, it would encompass those two projects. The map plan and reports for each would describe that, but it would be, as your attorney-
Because that takes into account if there's different pumping requirements. One area might need double pumping, another one might not, so by having separate districts, you can allocate the charges.
I just didn't know if there was a need for that piping to be taken further, if we're going to have the road, have the line open at that point, I guess I'm just asking if we are.
No, that will be taken into account when the pipes are laid in, but then the rest will come later on.
So of all the interdependencies, the only one that is still, is Montage is dependent upon you for emergency?
Correct.
But just to clarify, my understanding is, your development agreement allows the construction of that access road by whoever needs it when they need it?
Correct.
Right? So that if Montage was never built and Summit Woods needed that road, they have the right to construct the road? And vice versa, I guess.
Just one clarification. If Montage goes first, they do have the right to construct the road through Summit Woods, because they do need that second access.
Okay.
But again, Summit Woods as a standalone has the two access points.
And wouldn't need that.
It wouldn't need that. There was an agreement in place in the event of private water, private sewer, but that with the public connection is not needed. So again, in some respects, you can view Summit Woods as the standalone, but Montage, at least for the access road, is, there's an agreement in place that they can construct it if they went first with their construction, but Summit Woods kind of stands alone.
And I'm assuming they would need to build it according to your, whatever your current-
That's correct.
It's not like they can just build whatever they want, they're going to have to follow-
You're correct. Where it's laid out, where ultimately, if approved by the Board, they'd have to build within that roadbed.
The piping or layout, so basically, you'd be connecting from the pump station of Four Corners to then this project, Summit Woods?
It actually would connect, it actually would run through the common property right to the treatment plant.
So what is that route, like, that doesn't, it's kind of hard for me to follow?
Yeah, no, it's the lighting.
Like, does it go against 216 or old Route 52?
It actually follows it right up, right up 216 to the Four Corners project.
So that, right next to the gas station, and it goes all the way past the pizzeria, all the way up?
Right.
And then it goes down to-
The left into-
And then makes it left into Four Corners. So basically, it's running the horn tire?
Correct.
But you're going to have a pump station-
Both water and sewer.
Now, this pumping station in itself, who would maintain it? Like, who, you know, I'm just curious.
Sure, what happens once it's built is then turned over to the town.
Okay.
Then the town has these districts, so anyone who is connected to the system shares in the expense of maintaining the pump station. It's not a, well, it'd be the 175 homes that are built, they would pay their share. Montage, whatever number they are, they would pay their share.
They would get, like, basically a sewer charge.
Whoever is, correct, they would get a sewer charge. So it's not paid by the general town taxpayer, it's paid by the people who benefit from it.
And the other question I had, it was actually more for the other gentleman, you had mentioned a land fiscal, like, trust, you know, for the maintenance of it?
Right.
Usually, how are those handled where, like, I know, you know, monies are finite itself, when something, let's call it 20, 30 years down one, how's that usually handled then on the future? Is it reassessed if the species is still there? I'm just curious.
You mean the value, the assessment of the open space? Okay. Well, that, usually, the value of that is picked up, if you will, through the properties that are within that area, because theoretically, the homes are worth more because they're surrounded by the open space. But normally, the property itself would be tax-exempt and would not be paying a real estate tax on it for the open space provision.
No, but he had mentioned that there's like the maintenance of it.
Correct, and the way, if it's a private trust, as counsel has explained, they give a fund to that not-for-profit, which they then hold and manage and use to do the annual maintenance. Likewise, if the town held it, there would have to be a deposit with the town to defray the cost of the maintenance of whatever's involved in it.
If that funding's gone, then they would defer to the town, I guess?
Well, in concept, how it works, is that curious?
Does it defer to the town down the road when the funding's-
Down the road, I'm talking 30 years down the road, like, you know.
Yes, I mean, there are many different ways we might, we haven't gotten into the detail about the town holding it, but there's a possibility of some sort of a drainage, stormwater management area, district or something, that would make the, and it's also what use it's going to be put to. If it's going to be kept strictly as conservation, no passive recreation, that, you know, any of us could go for a nice walk someday on a path or trail. So there are many, and we have other properties like that throughout the town.
All right, just curious.
And when you generally deal with a private land trust, the upfront financial contribution is an amount that generally is then invested and generates money-
Okay.
So that they can then continue the maintenance. It's quite a procedure, I bet.
For the years of delay, I mean, this is still the original design, right? It's not like, there was no, I mean, like you said, the sewer district has changed and that kind of thing, but this is still the overriding design that was-
I think the only changes that really are major is there was a, the road over here was a loop road, if you remember. We actually did loop this back. In order to save a crossing, we eliminated it. We just created a cul-de-sac up here. The other changes that we made, we dedicated one lot here as, it's an archaeological area, we decided to just not do anything with that lot, moved it elsewhere on the site. Other than that, the changes are, you know, fairly minor.
Given, again, given the, the changing nature of the housing market and uses, is there any thinking about mixed use in any of this?
As far as commercial ver- and?
Yes, and or-
We have not anticipated it.
Not sure how well it would do out there.
But, I mean, it was, that's a lot of-
That would require rezoning, this is some residential.
I, I knew, it was a long stretch, but.
Just, Tom, you mentioned 175 homes, and I know we had originally, I think, set a maximum of 175 in the lot count, but we're not, how are we handling finalizing the, the final lot count based on, because we haven't done our actual site plan review yet.
Right. I think at that point, if, if something were to come up that would, let's say, not allow us a lot or a series of lots, then we-
I, I think the easiest way to express that would be, the 175 was a number for secret studies, that, that was the number. As you go through the subdivision layout, if a lot, you know, they, they claim it's 175, and I have no reason to doubt it, but as you're actually doing a subdivision map, if a lot doesn't meet the average width requirements, things like that, and there's no way to reconfigure it, then obviously, you can't approve a map that has a lot that doesn't meet the requirements. So in that way, that's how things get firmed up.
I'm going to ask my question more bluntly. So there isn't a requirement that there be at least 175 less, it's just a maximum, if it ends up being 172 or-
Correct, correct.
Whatever, but it won't be 180 if we've set a maximum.
Right, 175 was the number that was set for the purpose of the study. You have to have a number so you know, but you can't go over that number without redoing a great part of the study.
I just didn't know if we're, if we're accepting findings, whether we're locked in at that point or whether that still is to be determined as we finalize.
Right, it was very clear in your scoping document, there's a little-
There was a resolution.
There's a resolution that says it's for scoping purposes and, yeah.
But we can make that clear in the finding statement.
And maybe it's a good point to make, is when the document is ready to be accepted, the supplement or amended, whatever document we're going to call it, by the board accepting it, you're accepting it as being complete for the purposes of public discussion or your discussion, and for the other agency review and comment. You're not saying that you agree necessarily with everything. That's really a process that-
Probably that we requested all the information that is needed to make the final decision.
Right, and then in your finding statement, you're really putting, you know, the, the nails into the wood and putting everything together as to what you agree with.
Okay.
This might seem a little too early. For this project, are you looking to do like sidewalks and, you know, like a community center or something of that nature, or is this way too early?
There's an unproposed for the-
An unproposed, so basically, okay.
Mark, what is the average lot size?
I'd say about one-tenth of an acre, I think, is our, hang on, I can tell you.
Because it's a cluster, it's not a-
Yes, it's a cluster, and the size is-
Square feet.
That's right, I just-
Yeah, they're about a tenth of an acre.
More like seven or eight thousand square feet, maybe?
Yeah.
Tenth of an acre.
But there was a range, there's a range, some lots are larger and some are smaller.
It's all detached housing, though? No biattached or anything?
Right, again, I don't know the particular lot count, but they, they range in size between a little over 13,000 square feet, and some are up a little over five acres. So the majority are probably down toward the, the 13,000.
Mark, what was the nature of the archaeological issue that you mentioned on that one lot?
There was, they did find some chert, which is, I guess, a material that they used for making arrowheads. They found it in this location, and we, you know, were able to just say, no, no build, and we moved it. It's been a while, but I don't think they found anything else, but everything I think was prehistoric, so it would have been-
I think it was-
I think the major issue was the tunnels.
Yeah, that-
Yeah, but not for that lot.
No, no, I know, but I would say that was your major issue.
I can give you the study that they did, if you want to look through it and see what they found.
Gotcha, it's probably online?
Yeah, it's on the, it's, it's, would be called the Phase, Phase 1A, and then probably Phase, you did a two, you did a B, 2B as well, right? I think you did, they did a bunch of them.
Okay.
That's a good point. So everything that you've given us so far is at the summitwoods@eastfishkill.com? No?
What we tried to do in that is, because it's been a series of years, right from the original scoping document, the DEIS, the FEIS, all of the agency correspondences, the supplemental FEIS, what we thought were other pertinent correspondences, they're all listed there, and hopefully, on the town website, there can be a link to that.
Thank you.
We appreciate when we can get to the documents electronically, for a lot of us, we prefer that to the large stacks of paper.
Oh, you don't want the paper?
It's not that I don't appreciate a good map. Any other questions or comments?
Probably a highly inappropriate question, but here we go. What is the rough timeframe? Can we talk about that? Like, when are you-
What can we see in by when?
What's the timeframe?
So, we've provided the applicant with comment letters from the professionals that we need to get responses on, and then I think, once that happens, we're looking at a completeness determination as soon, not knowing when applicant will provide us the additional information that's been requested, I don't, I can't tell you exact time, but that's the next step, right?
The real question then would be for us, like, when, what's the cutoff for our input or comment?
When you, I'm, I'm saying what you mean by that.
That's a good question. Could you rephrase it?
There's this wave of materials going to the applicant.
Yes.
When's our last chance to throw anything into that? For those of us that are gradually making our way through the-
Well, if we can, if we make the assumption that they address all of our comments exactly as the information is, is needed.
Up until what point can somebody make a comment that, I would say, probably before they go to print?
Okay.
Yeah, here's our proposed timeframe. We would like the board to consider putting us on, putting us on for your September meeting. We do anticipate getting the, addressing the comments and the additional S, FEIS that we'll submit very shortly. Hope the staff has adequate time to review it. We-
We, you need to submit it with, to give our professionals adequate time to review it.
Absolutely, understood. Yep, and we're working toward that. Now that we've been back in front of the board, we, we do want to keep that fresh in everyone's mind, so, so we're working toward that.
Okay.
And if the board has comments as we're going through, we'll do our best to address them timely as well. So, yes, as soon as you have them-
Okay.
-that'd be helpful.
ASAP, that was, that was the question, thank you.
And then, once you're back in September, let's keep going with the, just kind of the overview of what we're expecting here. I don't know, Michelle, or you want to provide the, just to finish out the secret process, there's more to come, the-
There is, so if I-
The completeness determination doesn't end that process.
That's correct, if I could give a crack. What we'd like to work toward is getting the supplemental FEIS accepted. Once that is accepted as complete, as your council said, secret regulations have a minimum 10-day period for review of that. What we would hope is between the date you accept the FEIS and your next meeting, we could work on findings. Once the finding statement is adopted, and yes, we do need to put some meat to the bone in terms of, that is the document, that is your final determination on the environmental impact review process, if we could get that done, let, let's talk best-case scenario. We hit it out of the park with the supplemental FEIS submission, so we're here in September, and you would consider it complete. Our goal would be to have findings reviewed in October. Once that happens, we can then proceed with consideration of the preliminary plat in any appropriate conditions that would be considered. We would then need to, based on a preliminary, a conditional preliminary approval, work out all of those details and submit a final plat for your review. I can't give you a timeframe on that, because it will be dependent on the conditions that the board would impose on preliminary. Our best-case scenario timewise then would be September to accept the supplemental FEIS as complete, October for consideration of findings and discussion on the preliminary plat, with our goal of getting a preliminary approval so we can work on the, the final plat submission. We do have some issues to work through with the town on the districts and the, the technical issues on the water sewer connections.
Maybe a tad aggressive, but-
As I said, best-case, as I said, best-case scenario.
Exactly, seems a little aggressive.
But thank you, that was the, the answer to the question I was asking, was what is the mindset?
But I would like for the planning board to understand that some of the timing of this is under the applicant's control, because if they don't have the documents submitted for your September meeting, goes over to October-
Correct.
-that's their, you know, so it's a two-way street.
So, Michelle, just, and just help me a little bit, because when we had this last in front of the public in an open forum, we were in a public hearing, right, that was adjourned, because the applicant needed to go back to Fish and Wildlife. We've never brought it back to the public.
No, they've not seen any of that new information?
So, so what I'm asking for is, the timeline that was just described didn't contemplate that adjourned public hearing, right? At what point do we reopen that public hearing?
It did contemplate it in, when they're working to get their preliminary plat approval, there will be continuation of the public hearing.
So that was the post-October, so we would issue findings prior to re-
Correct, I mean, usually, you do your findings first.
I just want to make sure I, I, because-
Right.
I know that there were a lot of things that you have addressed now based on those original comments, I think it's going to be important to bring that back into the public forum and-
Well, I think so too, I, I really do. And I said earlier that all those years ago, the planning board opened a public hearing on the preliminary plat and the DEIS, closed the public hearing and the DEIS, I think technically, the public hearing may remain open, it'll be re-noticed on the preliminary plat after the findings.
And the other thing I think we should discuss is, at some point, we think probably a sign should be erected at the site with a reference to the website, so that, you know, that an application is still pending and information can be had at, you know, whatever the site is. And that, you know, at some point, the next few months-
Ideally, with the web address, you know, with the link.
Yeah, I think it would be good to talk about that.
Understood.
And I did speak, one of my comments in my letter, and also when I spoke with Mark, was just to make sure that it was really clear in the project description, even if it's just a couple of brief paragraphs, that sort of just explains where the project went and what has changed, so that the average person reading it that was paying attention in 2005 understands why it went away and what, how you modified the project in response to agency comments and either avoided or mitigated or lessened impacts.
We're going to work on that.
Do you have any other questions for us at this point? You've got the comment letters?
Nope, we have it.
Here, okay.
Them.
All right, Michelle or Scott, Tom, anything else we need to add? Final comments from board members?
Oh, I'm sorry, just real quick, that realignment at 216 and 52.
Yes.
I was discussing the realignment of 216 at 52.
That was part of the other project, right?
That's Montage.
That's just one project's responsibility, or not?